To order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson, let me slow down. Like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District at 7:06 PM. And can we get members present?
Joseph Otidey, Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Alright. And who would like to lead us in the pledge? How about, alright, Mr. Vdolores?
Please stand. Right hand over your heart, ready pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Somehow that script is just...
And do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications, any administrator comments?
I can start. This week, we're having training for our Common Core Math. And it is in collaboration with the Jefferson Union High School District, Pacific Elementary School District, Brisbane, Bayshore School Districts, and our school district. This is one of two sessions and we are having a great turnout and really exciting learning that's happening.
Great.
I'll pass. I'll pass also.
Alright, board member acknowledgements and commendations. We'll start with Mr. Waters.
No.
Nope. And Ms. Brizuela?
I think there was something we did afterwards, so I'm sorry.
You can go and then you can go after...
Yeah, you go if you want.
I just want to commend our state legislature for actually passing the budget. But I'm not sure, I guess you'll talk more about it. Because I know there was still some question about one particular item. So I don't know how that's working out, but anyhow. And, and just, I guess that's it. Ms. Brizuela?
Just that Relay for Life was very successful on the weekend and to thank all those that participated in that program, so...
Yes, thanks. Alright, there's no speaker cards, correspondence?
Have no correspondence and no comments.
Alright, we're moving fast. We made up for lost time, so, actually we're ahead of time now. Do we have a... A, um, let's see. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Smith.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's no, no, there is a resolution. We don't need a roll call? I guess it's not on this...
No, there's...
Not on the, alright. Alright, next we have presentation, correct? Yeah. On the lease, leaseback construction management services for the TR policy to middle school new building project, phase one. And do we have the representatives here?
Yes.
This is, did you, did you...
I was gonna mention something.
Okay.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Paul Keough with Block Construction. We're prepared a short presentation, but we want to be very respectful of your time, so we want to run through this fairly quickly. We're excited to be here and we're excited about the opportunity to work in Jefferson School District again. Our purpose tonight is to explain why we're the best fit for your project. The other one? Got it. So we've prepared a short agenda. We'll talk about who we are, our team that's present, go through a little bit about who Block Construction is, talk about some relevant experience that we've had, and then just talk about how we're going to approach your project. So again, quickly on our team, I'm Paul Keough, I'm the project executive. My role on the project is to oversee our project team and really lend my experience to help support them. I work all the way from pre-construction, all the way through closeout and beyond. And I stay in touch with your team to ensure that we're providing and exceeding the expectations of them. I've been in the industry for 28 years now, the last 16 with Block Construction. I graduated from Santa Clara with a civil engineering degree. And for the last 12 years, I've spent the majority of my time overseeing most of our work up and down the peninsula, including about eight or nine school districts in San Mateo County.
Good evening, my name's Kristin McLean, I will be the project manager. I've been with Block since 2004, so over the last 10 years, I've worked primarily in K through 12 projects. One of my first projects was actually here in the Jefferson Elementary School District, working on the Franklin and Polisita gymnasiums. I will be your main point of contact, giving regular updates on the budget, the construction process, really just giving you whatever you need to communicate that to staff, faculty, students, and the community at large. And I just, I understand that construction can be pretty demanding on a district during the school year, especially in an occupied campus. So we want to ensure that this is a smooth process, but also fun and enjoyable for you as well.
Good evening, I'm Dave Bremer, I'm a project engineer. My role in this project is to basically track all of the documentation and communication between the administration and ourselves to make sure that everybody's always up to date, as well as provide technical assistance to Greg and Kristin to make sure that they have everything they need to efficiently run this project. Been with Block since I graduated out of the construction management program at Cal Poly. Since then, I've worked on all occupied site projects and most of them were lease-leaseback projects. So I'm pretty comfortable with these kind of things. And finally, I live in San Francisco, so if anyone ever needed anything, I can be here in about 10 minutes.
Hi, I'm Greg, I'd be the construction superintendent. I've been with Block for 20 years, the last 13 have been primarily in the K through 12 DSA public arena, so I'm very, very familiar with not only DSA work, but working in this district. I'll be boots on the ground, onsite, every hour that we're having construction. So my job is to manage the day-to-day construction, the schedule, safety, work with the school, to keep things on track.
Okay, so a little bit about Block Construction. We've been around since 1970 and we plan on being around at least until 2070 and beyond. Last 15 years, though, we've really focused on the K-12 education market. In our minds, we've become the school builder on the peninsula and in the South Bay. We have about 200 employees. Last year, we did $150 million worth of work volume, and this year, we're scheduled to do $160 million worth of work. As you can see, we've done over 200 lease-leaseback projects. And that billion dollars is somewhat misleading, because all of the work that we've done has really been very similar for your project, your size project. So anywhere from $5 million to $15 million, that's really our sweet spot. We take pride that clients trust us to call us back due to our excellent customer service. As a matter of fact, 80% of our volume is from repeat clients. As we mentioned, we did work back in the mid-2000s here in Jefferson School District. We've worked with your architect, DLM, both in Jefferson and in Hillsborough, so we're very familiar with them. We're very proud of the fact that we've never had any litigation with any clients or partners. It really says a lot about how we approach a project, very team-oriented, very much being proactive. And that's pretty unheard of in the public school market. We're also very proud of our award-winning safety program. Safety is one of our core values, and we've won three state and one national award for our safety program. But it's really not about the safety of our workers, it's really, we understand, it's about the safety of the students, it's about the safety of the faculty, any visitors that you have on your site. Really, we've worked on occupied sites before and we know how to work around that. So this gives you a list of some of the recent districts that we've worked in. The ones with an asterisk are those that we've worked with the lease-leaseback delivery method. But what we've learned from all, working in all these districts, is we're here to listen. We're here to listen to what your needs are. Every district is different. Alum Rock is different than Hillsborough. So we want to fit our services to fit the needs of your district. So we wanted to talk a little bit about some of the relevant projects. Greg?
Well, there's the gym at Polisita that we built about eight years ago now, I guess. In addition to that, I was part of two summer modernizations. The first one was seven schools, new PG&E packages, doors and hardware, ADA access. We got it, 82 bathrooms down to removing the concrete floors, down to the studs, reframing, and put it all back together again in 10 weeks. We're used to high-pressure projects and we will be able to certainly deliver this project on time.
So another one we wanted to talk about is the Hillsborough City School District. There, we did four different projects on four different sites, which were all occupied during construction. We delivered all of these via lease-leaseback and two of the projects were actually with DLM. In this district, we finished all the projects on time and within budget and we actually had savings that went back to the district that enabled them to do additional projects that they would not have otherwise had the funds for.
So the last project we'd like to highlight is the middle school in San Carlos School District. It's a project that we're actually working on right now, that's very similar to what you're doing out here. It's the same type of construction, it's a new classroom building on a ground-up project with similar schedule that has to be completed before the first day of school in the following, following year. The main thing we wanted to highlight about this is that it's, we're directly working with the staff and administration consistently to mitigate any kind of impact, control the noise, and ensure a safe environment for all of the students and the staff out there.
Now, we want to talk about your project specifically. So we're going to start out just in the pre-construction phase and talk about the guaranteed maximum price development. So, you know, our experience on over 200 lease-leaseback projects has really enabled us to have a unique position in the K through 12 construction market. We built a strong reputation with our subcontractors, which really leads to favorable pricing on bid day, which for you, it results in good cost-effective project. We're going to actively market the subcontractor community to build interest in this project. Again, along with that, and the fact that you guys are looking to go out to bid in the fall, which in our experience, a lot of the subs are coming off summer work and really looking to get some more work on their backlogs, you're going to see even better coverage and good competitive pricing. We're going to work with your administration and make sure that we're finding the right subcontractors that fit this project, meaning, you know, we're not going to get anybody too small or too large. We want to make sure that they're going to be able to perform on this project and work with them. If local subs are concerned, we definitely want to take that into account as well. In our experience with other districts, the beauty of the lease-leaseback process is really that it's open book, it's transparent to the very last dollar, and that's how we approach it. We want it to be a completely open book process for you, so if you want to review bids, you see any number, all the numbers, and how we kind of compile to get that guaranteed maximum price. The important thing for us is that we're able to demonstrate to you that there was good coverage and competitive pricing on bid day and that you're confident that this is going to be a successful project.
So actually, we wanted to talk a little bit about the schedule. We've put together something based on the 10-month construction timeframe, as well as the October start date. And we have about a two-month pre-construction duration and a 10-month schedule. During the pre-con period, we'll do a constructibility review, where we'll go through the plans and specifications and make sure that we identify any questions that the subcontractors may have during the bid process, so that while we're compiling that GMP, everyone is apples to apples and we can actually get tight numbers. We've also worked with our pre-construction team to kind of identify some of the big milestones on the 10-month schedule so that we can make sure that we can meet those throughout, so that we have the delivery date down to the T. So, also, project closeout is something that I handle. It's something that we want to make sure that everything is closed out on time, as well as certified with DSA. So I start day one, basically tracking all of the paperwork, whether it's the internals or the DSA paperwork, so that by the end of the project, we have everything, and there won't be any hangups at the end that would extend the project timeline. Finally, at the very end, I conduct a training with all of the staff and anyone else that wants to be involved to make sure that everyone knows how to function the system, how the systems function out on the school, and then we hand that over in a DVD with the rest of the closeout, so that when new staff comes in, that can be taught to them. So, the point is that as we finish, we will still be available to help afterwards, so we're not just going to finish, pack up, and leave.
So Dave and I actually met with Brent, the principal, at Polisita, and Rick Young, and we put together this plan that's up on the board right now, this is our fencing plan. There's a couple of kind of constraints here, in that the parking lot is used by the church on Sundays. We need a place to park our vehicles, our materials, deliveries, all that kind of stuff. So this actually took quite a bit of work to put this down, so Brent likes it, Rick likes it, and I think this is going to be an excellent way. You'll notice that arrows at the bottom, we're entering the campus from the bottom of the campus, we're not trying to come in from the top. There's only one very narrow little road off Market Street, it's not wide enough to get some of our equipment in. So this way, it really isolates the, separates the school from the construction. There won't be intermixing of kids and construction. In addition, where it says "construction fencing" up at the very top, we're right next to that building, we're going to be building an actual solid wood barrier right there that'll cut way down on the noise and the dust for the students in that particular classroom. And as always, we're completely open to discussion on changing anything that needs to be changed throughout construction to make life for the students and the faculty as good as possible. I mean, let's face it, there is going to be some noise and some dust, but our goal is to really minimize that to the highest extent possible.
Okay, so to recap, really, kind of why we're the best fit for your project. As I mentioned, for the last 15 years, we've really focused on this K-12 education market. And I would say, in the last 15 years, about 60 to 70% of our volume is in the K-12 education market. With all the education work, though, that we've done, I'm very proud to say that we've never not opened a school on time. We've had a successful relationship with Jefferson School District in the past. We've worked well with DLM, your architect, in a couple of different districts. And as Kristin mentioned, we have a very unique leverage in the subcontractor community because of all the education work that we've done. And again, echoing what Kristin said, we really think that going out to bid in the fall, like you're doing, is really going to get you very competitive pricing. But really, the team here, we're excited to get started, we're ready to get started right away. And what it boils down to is we are committed to doing everything we can to ensure your program goes successfully. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer.
Alright, thanks.
The questions I have is for this item or the next one?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have any questions?
I do, but I think, I just asked, I had already talked to him about some of my questions, but it's for the next...
Oh, the attorney?
So you're off, you're off clear. But I just want to say, it was a pleasure having you guys work here, I was around here at that time, so...
Thank you.
Everything looked really good and worked out well, so...
Excellent, thank you, appreciate that.
Probably will have some other questions, too, but...
I just have one small question. When does the actual pre-construction period start? Soon, right?
It's already started.
Oh, started, yeah.
It's already started when they went out to go meet with Rick and the principal, but we haven't officially started the pre-construction, but as soon as we get authorization, we're more than happy to get started.
Alright, so after tonight, basically?
And I'm glad you brought up the item about safety, because that would be my very big concern.
Yes.
Because already of the way the school property is, doesn't need to be any more danger. But that might be something that you guys work together with the school, making sure the pathway...
Absolutely.
For the children. But thank you for having that be a concern.
Yes, alright, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I just might want to add that, you know, we've explained a little bit of what the selection process was like, pretty extensive. We had 10 responses from different firms. We interviewed two more closely and had a second phase of the interview process with some written questions. And interviewed two firms, and out of that interview, it became clear that we would want to recommend working with Block for many of the reasons they've mentioned. They've also have extensive experience working in occupied sites, which is what we have here. So it's different working in an unoccupied, brand-new school site. When you don't have kids, you don't have to worry about that. But they have a lot of experience in our county and in occupied sites, so that's... Our recommendation is based on a lot of things, but those are the things that stand out to me.
So can, just review a little bit, what we're, what we're agreeing about now is just the pre-construction?
Correct. So this next item is the pre-construction services agreement with Block Construction Company. We've invited our district legal counsel to come and, you know, speak about that a little bit, provide some background on lease-leaseback, and what all the different phases of that looks like. And in your backup, you have the pre-construction services agreement that we would recommend for approval tonight.
So whether you're going to do it or the attorney is going to do it? Can we get a real short, a real down-to-earth explanation about lease and leaseback? Because I've had people calling me saying, "What are you doing leasing our property?"
I will let our attorney do that, because apparently, he's the expert in lease-leaseback, and so... I think I have an idea, but I know you do, so you try it.
I will try to be concise and clear, but I'm a lawyer, so...
I know.
I'll do what I can.
Okay.
My name's Arnie Sandberg, I work with Lozano Smith and Harold Freeman, who has also worked for the district. I've been with Lozano Smith for over six years. I have worked on public works, construction in law firms, public entity law firms, for over 15 years. I've represented public entities for over 20. I have worked on numerous lease-leaseback projects before. So this has been, I've been working with Julie and Bernie and Rick for the last few weeks, getting the documents ready for this project, and I'm here to explain briefly the process. After I go through the explanation, if you have any questions, let me know. The basic public works delivery method that most people are familiar with is competitive bidding. It's often called "design, bid, build." You have an architect design it, you go out to bid, you award it to the lowest competitive, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder through competitive bidding, and then you build it. And that's been used a lot in California for over 100 years, really. There's a benefit to that, it's that you lock the contractor into a low price. The contractors are competing with each other and you get some good prices on the bid. The disadvantage is that you cannot pick the contractor based on the quality of their work. If they're a responsible, responsive bidder and they have the lowest price, you have to award to that contractor. Lease-leaseback is a delivery method that is an alternative available to school districts only. Cities can't use it, but school districts can. And it's good because, because it allows you to select the contractor, not based on the price necessarily. You do want a contractor that gives you a good price, but you can select based on quality as well. And that's the process that the superintendent just described, that they have gone through and they've selected Block. Contractually, the lease-leaseback process is authorized by Education Code 17406. And it's called lease-leaseback because in the statute, it allows the district to lease the premises to the contractor for a dollar a year. Then, through a leaseback, a sublease, the district has the right to use the property, in this case, for ongoing classes and so on. And in these agreements, in these documents, the district will be paying the contractor for the construction through sublease payments. So that, it's not a straight contract, construction contract, like you would have under competitive bidding, but that's the way it's done throughout the state and it's authorized by the statute. That's legally how it comes to play. Now, there's a quirk, because in the statute, you cannot enter a lease-leaseback agreement until the DSA has approved the plans. So what do you do before the DSA has approved the plans, which is often the case? You enter a pre-construction agreement, and that's what the Block personnel were mentioning in their presentation, pre-construction services. And that's the agreement that's before the board tonight for approval. You are allowed to enter a pre-construction agreement with the lease-leaseback entity to start performing the preliminary work, gathering subcontract, or at least making contact with subcontractors, starting to get an idea of what the bids will be, performing a constructibility review, and other numerous tasks that are outlined in the agreement itself. And that will enable the district and the lease-leaseback entity, Block, to hit the ground running the minute the DSA issues its approval of the plans. Then you can enter the lease-leaseback agreement right away, and then they can start the construction. So that's the process in a nutshell. And if that's too small a nutshell, feel free to ask questions and...
I'll have one quick question.
You bet.
Being that we have the lease-leaseback, does that in any way affect how we operate?
No, it should not. I mean, in terms of how the school operates, how the district operates, to a bystander, it'll look like just any other construction project. It's purely the legal mechanism that has... It's purely the legal mechanism that has to be in place due to the language in Section 17406. The contracts, in many ways, are very similar. For example, there's a set of general conditions, which you would have for a competitively, excuse me, a competitively bid project, but also for a lease, lease-back project. And they're virtually identical. It goes through all the rules about what the contractor's obligations are, what the district's obligations are, payment processes, change order processes, et cetera. But the overall structure is slightly different in the sense that you have the lease for a dollar a year, and then it's leased back.
Okay. They won't kick us off the property? No, just kidding.
No. There's no fine print buried in there.
No.
Is the purpose of even having this form of contracting, is it, is it because we have an occupied site?
No. You can go through competitive bidding with an occupied site. The benefit, as I mentioned before, the primary benefit to lease, lease-back is that you have more latitude in your selection of the contractor. And for some projects, the selection of the contractor may not make that much of a difference. You know, for simple paving projects where every, there are lots of paving contractors and they all pave the same way, you know, selecting a contractor based on quality may not be as important. When you're building some school facilities, the quality may be more important, and Block has an established track record of quality.
Well, it has kept a lot of public agencies with their hands tied, having to take the lowest bid.
Yeah.
And many times, and I've seen some nightmare, not here so much, but other places, because they had to do that. So that part is good, and our, you know, the unions are constantly reminding us that we have to pay prevailing wage and stuff like that, so.
Absolutely.
And that's a win-win for everybody, too, because it's, you want to have the employees happy and being paid properly and be experienced, so I think it all works out. It sounds good, it's just a new terminology here.
That's right. And I noticed when they had the slide up for all the schools they've worked for before, they listed Jefferson Elementary School District. But there wasn't an asterisk, so it's, it looks like it's something new.
Yeah, it's something new.
The district. But it should run seamlessly like a regular construction project despite the slight difference in the contracts at the beginning.
So, so some of the questions, I think, may have been answered by what I saw there. So we have a project, we used to have project manager here. Instead, we're going to have a project, was it supervisor? No. There's something you guys have. And so.
So we'll have a superintendent on site.
Yeah, right.
And we'll have a project engineer on site.
Right. Okay. So, so basically, that's the, you're the people that are going to be in charge of decision-making on things that are happening, even though you might want to be talking with our folks about what you're doing? Or what? No?
They're supervising the actual.
You're supervising the work, but I mean.
We're supervising the work, but we're meeting with your staff on a weekly basis in what's called an owner-architect-contractor meeting. And so all of the decisions are based as a team, and we come up with solutions.
Good. Okay, so that's good. Okay, so.
I think we'll find more questions.
And I had some, I had some questions about change orders. And unfortunately, there's times when we've had to go through some of that. And if a change order is necessary to happen, and it's possibly, I don't want to say fault like it's bad, but because something wasn't done by a contractor or subcontractor, are we bound by having to pay for these extra things? Or is there responsibility level with the contractor that says, "Oops, we did, we shouldn't have done this, we should have done this"?
We would only submit a change order for approval if it was deemed that it was something out of the subcontractor's control. If it was something that the subcontractor made a mistake on, it's up to them to make amends for it.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear. Write that down to somebody, you know.
It'll be in the contract.
Okay, thank you. And only because I've been through some projects, not with you now.
Yeah.
Okay, but some other projects that we go, "Oh, jeez." Okay. And then, so I think most of those questions on this page is done, so bear with me till I find it. Okay? You already talked about the lease, lease-back, so. Okay, so this was a question I had was, if, supposing a subcontractor that you had, for some reason, did not perform up to what you expected them to do, or there was a disagreement between your subcontract and you guys, and there might be, could be, because it's happened before, litigation, would we be called in as also responsible?
If it's an issue between us and the subcontractor, then it's up to us to deal with it.
Okay. So we're clear of that? Okay, good. Okay? And then the second question, part of that, I think you guys answered that question. If that situation did occur, and, and there was litigation, would, we'd be suffering damages at all?
Well, it really depends on the facts of the case. There's extra work that sometimes is claimed by a contractor against the owner. And that would just be a matter of calculating first whether, first determining whether the contractor's entitled to extra payment, and if they are entitled, how much? Then there are delay issues. That's the other major category of damages, where if it's, if completion is delayed, whose fault is it? If the contractor thinks it's the owner's fault, then the contractor may ask for not just time extensions, but also compensation for the delay.
Exactly.
And if the owner thinks the contractor's at fault, the owner may ask for liquidated damages. That, those are some of the, those are the usual claims that come up on a project, if claims come up.
But as long as the district is not the one that's at fault for making that happen, are we still having to subject ourselves to having to pay off?
If the district is not at fault, if that's the district's position and there's evidence supporting it, then the district should not have to pay those claims. That said, litigation is expensive. It goes on for years sometimes, and it depends on the situation. There have been many settlements in the state of California before when people thought that it, that they had a good case, but they still decided to settle. So it's difficult to predict how any sort of litigation would wind up. But generally speaking, if the district, if there are facts supportive of the district's position, the district would be told that. I mean, your lawyers would be advising you of that in private, and then the board would be able to make decisions on the best course of action.
We never had that before with you guys, so isn't that about you?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, so then the other thing is, we will have in the next contract about if it's not, if, let's say the project is not done on time? We'll have all that language in there, right?
Yes. The contract will contain language relating to liquidated damages and the time for completion.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
So once the pre-construction phase is over, are we still considered in a lease, what is it, lease, lease-back contract?
The pre-constr, the key trigger is going to be approval by the DSA. The minute the approval comes in, which is now anticipated in August, that's what I heard, sometime in August, it's expected, then it will transition into a lease, lease-back agreement. Those documents will be signed and approved, and then the actual construction can start.
So we'll be coming back to you with the actual document for the lease, lease-back.
For the whole contract. And the DSA, just for, because we use a lot of acronyms. I know it, it's Department of.
State Architect.
Architect.
So I, I'm kind of following up on what you just said a little bit. So, okay, so we get through all the construction stuff and the construction is done, so the minute it's done, you give us the lease back? No?
The terms of the agreement, by the terms of the agreement, the lease, lease-back agreement, the lease expires the minute the construction is finished. So the lease will not exist anymore, and it's all yours.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we won't have to pay it. Well, you know, I don't know how we can survive without it, a year. Well, thank you for listening to our questions.
No problem.
All right, thanks. So that was item number four, which is, and now we're moving on to item number five, CSBA.
You do need to vote on.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, these guys didn't wait around here just because they wanted to hear us, right? Okay, so we got a.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, make a motion that we approve the Pre-Construction Services Agreement with Block Construction Company for the TR Polosita Middle School New Building Project, Phase One, parentheses, lease, lease-back?
Let me hear a second already. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, yay.
Good, all right.
When do we get our, our, our?
Color do you want?
Huh? Let's see.
Pink. You got pink? I'll take white.
No, pink is not too good. Let's see, let's see. Purple.
We like to do tours, so we definitely want you guys to come check out a little bit of what we're going along.
Yeah. But thank you.
All right, thanks.
I recall, I remember you guys. All right.
All right. CSBA, pardon me, CSBA Annual Conference.
So the, the CSBA Annual Conference is coming up. I do want to draw your attention that it is at a different time of year.
Yeah.
Usually, it is the week right after Thanksgiving, and this year, it's like two weeks after that. So it's, and it starts on a Sunday.
Yeah, I saw that.
And goes through Tuesday.
Weird.
So I think the, it's in San Francisco, so it's probably the availability and, you know, that, that convention center is in high demand. So anyway, that's when it is. So this is an opportunity for board members to, you know, say that they're interested in going. There's a cost there. Early registration is over August 4th, so we want to make sure that we had that. And I would contact other board members who are not here to see if they would be willing, if they are interested in coming. There's also, in your backup, you have some, there's two separate pre-conference sessions. One of them is new board members, which I don't think we have right now. And, and Mr. Waters already attended that session in Sacramento last January. But there's, then another, there's a legal symposium for board members, which basically touches on the topics that are sort of front burner issues for school boards, and the topics change even from what's printed right now, what might be hot in November and December could change. So they'll have different presenters on some of those different legal topics.
Yes.
So that, is that, is that one on Sunday, right?
That would probably be on Saturday. That would probably be on Saturday, the 13th.
I've always liked going to that.
Yeah. And we do have, because it is a local conference, we have sufficient funds for any board member who would like to go to the conference and/or the, the pre-conference sessions.
So you were asking right now to just, which board members are interested in going? And you need to, when do you need to know exactly who's going?
We need to know exactly who's going by the end of July.
So the second board meeting in July?
There's only, there's only one meeting in July, and that's July 9th.
All right, so by July 9th.
So by then, by 9th, yeah. So what we could do today is you can authorize up to five board members to attend. And then you can RCP to me or Ms. Kovarai, and we could register you.
All right. Any of you, either of you interested?
Oh, yeah.
Yes? Yes, I'm interested as well, so, yeah, I think, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we authorize the five board members to attend the conference, CSBA Annual Conference in December 14th through the 16th. Or actually, the 13th? Is that what you want to say? Ooh, Friday, the 13th?
No, it's Saturday.
Saturday.
Oh, that's fine, thank you.
All right, so I heard a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, what went out?
Oh, the screen. Yeah, and so just, so for the pre-conference, that, that registration deadline is not till November. So you just.
All right.
If you just let us know by the end of July, obviously you guys want to go, we'll register you. I'll get in contact with Dr. Douglas and Mr. Otidy.
All right.
And get their.
I wonder what kind of turn I'm in here.
Just got to look at my teaching schedule for the fall. Make sure it's all good.
Excuse me? Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, we'll wait on that then.
Okay. All right, that's good. Curriculum and Instruction, Pupa Personnel Services, Item One, Acceptance of Donations. Anyone like to?
I'll just say it very quickly. We, we, I make a motion to approve the donation at Georgia Washington School for $2,500 from a grant from Justin Watkins, MPH. Let's see, that's.
Wow, that's great.
He has his degree, Master of Public Health.
Okay, Master of Public Health, okay, sorry. Community Health, I don't need to read all that, anyway.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
There was another one named for a minute.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I just wanted to add, though, that that's actually really great that now they have the garden, but now the teachers will get extra training on how to, I guess, implement with the curriculum.
And how to make it a curriculum instead of an activity.
So that's great, and I, and it would be, it would behoove us to solicit funds from Mr. Watkins or other people to support the other schools as well that have gardens, so that's great. Number three, Local Account, Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP.
So you've heard various presentations on this topic already. With the last meeting, we had held the public hearing. There was no significant input, so the LCAP remains as it was. So it's now up for your approval. It needs to be done by the 30th, so at a regular meeting, which means today, so.
Yeah, well, we have to do, do this again next year at the same time? All right.
Yeah, we do have to do updates to it. So we're yet, we're not yet clear on what it means to do the interim LCAP. And you do a big one every three years, and then small ones, updates every year between.
All right. Any discussion on this? I know you mentioned last time. Yeah. Wanted to see more sports, so that would have to.
We can look into that carefully.
Next year?
Counselors.
But the coun, there are counselors here.
Nurses, yeah. But I think the main one that wasn't included this time was the sports, so.
Yeah.
Any discussion from?
No, I, I agree that whatever it is, whether it's sports, which has been sort of come down a little bit, or whether it's art or music or anything that's extra for our children,